Evening, uh, call the work session of August sixteen, twenty twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Well, Vanny Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Broneman.
Here.
You have a form.
Senator Haley is on it.
Oh, I will now show Mr. Haley as present.
Thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the work session?
This is Jeff. So move.
This is Tom. I second.
Motion to approve the agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Well, Vanny Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Broneman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go and see if there are any, uh, do any board members have any updates from any, uh, meetings with the unified government or any other updates?
I think we haven't had any meetings since we left.
Jeff, get anything?
Uh, ma- madam president, we, um, the economic development and finance committee did meet, um, on Monday, just yes, uh, day before yesterday. And probably of most interest would be what responsibilities would be transferred to the community college with the downtown campus, uh, a couple of blocks from our offices there. And, um, the acquisition or the change of what is known as the Willa Gill Center, which has many social services that come out of it. And, and there's now a resolution in place for, um, uh, the community college to acquire that. We did discuss what role the utility would have and also the tax rate of the Willa Gill Center and what that, uh, taxable entity would be. It would, there would be one by the college. Um, there were some other areas of interest that did come up, but that was probably the gist or the most exciting part, I think, of economic development and finance that the day before yesterday that was had. But further details will come primarily out of tomorrow, uh, which has been fast tracked. Tomorrow's, uh, unified government commission meeting where that will be on the agenda, uh, among some other fast track items for the UG Commission to consider. Thank you.
So, so David, thank you. Is, is one of those items, uh, the, the updated requirements for their utility rebate program?
Uh, that did not come up at EDNF, I don't believe, um, that we did talk about, uh, the re- utility rebate program. I don't know what else is on their agenda, but in our committee, I don't recall that coming up.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee O says anything to report? Uh, Bill, do you have anything, um, report?
Uh, yeah, I'll be quick. So today at about one thirty, I met with Sharice Davis's office. And, uh, she had pulled in not just me, but the CEO of Evergy, uh, Mike Kelly from Johnson County, there was, there was about ten, I was told, to talk about federal funding, to make sure that we were all having conversations on, uh, we draw federal funding into the community and then down and support people within our communities around the, around the region. It's also working on Missouri side with Emmanuel Cleaver and, uh, make sure that there's about ten billion dollars that come into the region. If they, if we can all agree and work together towards what those programs look like, uh, what is the makeup? How do we all work together? How do we set aside our differences and, uh, and work as, as a region, a pool of dollars? And her concern is if White Knight County, Johnson County, other, yeah, I'm not sure what South Johnson County, but the other areas that she serves. And then certainly, certainly the part of White Knight County that she don't serve. If we're not all, uh, identifying and working towards stuff on our end, then, uh, we certainly won't get the money out of Topeka. So some of this stuff is starting to become more apparent as to what it means, uh, I did talk to her about if there is a way of influencing the state to make sure that, uh, all of the funds and the biggest part of the conversation was around the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act, but we also talked about some of the other funding opportunities. But to make sure that what's in it for customers are not simply provided in the form of tax credits, because it may not have the, the impact that we all would hope that our community will receive. But are there some type of, uh, rebate programs that makes sense? You know, it's like if people want to, want, want to upgrade their, uh, heating and cooling systems, those rebates will become available, refrigerators, water heaters, more towards driving towards further electrification and things like that. It's not all provided, the incentives are not solely provided in the form of tax credits, because that means people are having to put more money upfront in order to receive a percentage of a tax credit later. So, and if they are going to provide some level of tax credit, maybe talk about how do you bring in some suppliers on that side? Also make sure that the suppliers are passing on those benefits directly to the community if they're getting the tax credits. As a utility, we need to take a look at what does municipal tax credits now mean to us, since that's been opened up to the BPU and to the unified government? And then what role and then how do we make sure that we get, we get, uh, some funding based on those, those municipal tax credits, which were not out there in the past? So still got work to do. There's a lot of it is based around, around, uh, some of this is, or based left while I was talking about giving our consumers more options than just tax credits, but also there is the other things on, on, as we continue to go down the road on, uh, electrifying more and more of the city, uh, what does that mean? And I guess my conversation, I have talked to Andrew quite, quite extensively about this. Yes. And then probably talk to her is, you talk about advancing more electricity. You know, I'm sure the gas companies are probably way, way in on that too. So, I mean, where's the political pushback and, and where's the path forward on trying to get through some of, some of that? So it was a start. It was, it was a high level meeting. There's more and more meetings that's going to be needed as things become more, more clear to not only us, but she's certain about how some big things are going to shape out at the state level. So she's working, working that, that end as well. But, uh, but it's our ability to get out and inform our community as to what's out there. And then us helping to shape some of those decisions with the state too. So I did say, you know, the one thing that's missing is elected officials, you know, from the local level. And if you're talking about breaking down silos across the region, then that certainly has to have a conversation among elected officials across, you know, not just KCK, not just Johnson Kelly. But, uh, so where does, where does the mayor stand? Where does the, you know, elected official stand in the different, different jurisdictions? And then how do we advance that conversation? They come up with a, uh, solution that may benefit the whole region. But how do we isolate, uh, some of those decisions around what's good for our community? So I gave them some, some statistics on what the state's looking for. The Justice Forty is one of them and Andrew was helping me with dig up some of that information. So looks like about fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the Justice Forty census tracts in the state of Kansas essentially reside here in Kansas, Kansas. We're the second largest, uh, number by population next to Wichita in terms of Justice Forty census tracts. But yeah, we account for about fifteen.
Right. And then just the overall drivers of our community and all. So there were some things that I certainly learned. I don't spend the whole time trying to give positive word on things on the agenda. But it was a very good kickoff meeting. Uh, she's going to plan a series of meetings. There's things that I probably won't be invited to. But, uh, but there will be upcoming meetings on bringing back fans and how does the private sector and the public sector work together? Also to, uh, ensure that we're all moving forward with a, a plan to, that goes back to Jeff City, that goes back to Topeka. That meets the criteria that the federal government is just outlined. And any, any things that the state is doing different? How do we ensure that, uh, that we at least get monies that should be coming into the community, uh, through our citizens? Anything else?
Yeah, no, it sounds good.
So I was asked to come along. So, uh, if she wanted just a small thing, pay, uh, put together initially, but I would imagine this is going to expand. You know, that, uh, uh, it's interesting to see me talk about more community focused initiatives versus an investor owned who's looking at it from a little bit different angle. But, but, uh, we wasn't, we were not that separated, but there was a lot of things that every G brought to the table, to that conversation that made a whole lot of sense for us too. So those are the opportunities areas we've been working together to, uh, try to get at least something done. But some things are clear. There's still a lot of things out there that just haven't been made clear for us as to what we can do or what this community could do. But, but it's starting to, it's starting to open up and it's starting to become more and more apparent.
So I've got a question for you. On the municipal tax credits, those have actually been converted to direct payments now to municipality, correct?
Or is I?
Yes, that's correct. They don't have, the IRS doesn't have the language out per se, but that is the model is that we can receive direct payment directly off those.
Right. So my, my question to that is like, like part of, part of this funding may be, it may be, uh, it, it's going to take time to kick in, but it may be for a ten-year payment period. But then there may be an additional ten years that they're looking at. So if we're out trying to fund certain projects and improvements, how long are the dollars really there? Okay. And then how far can we go down, go down the road and ensuring that we're going to start a project? When are they going to be there throughout the, you know, the duration of what it's going to take throughout to complete everything? And that's, that's a little bit of an unknown too.
And in, in the, in the case of, of, you know, particular projects that we may want to consider for that. And I understand that there's a lot that still has to be, um, worked through and you guys may not know the answer. Um, but do you think it's something that we could pursue in our own right? Or it's something that's going to have to go through this coalition and/or is it going to have to go through the UG?
Um, I think we can pursue some things on our own. You know, it's just like, uh, forget, forgive me for this, Wendy, but there are times where we tried to work through the UG, we came up with nothing. Okay. So to be quite frank, you know, speaking frankly, so, you know, and, and if you go back several years, you know, when all these stimulus dollars are coming out, you know, we put forth some pretty good app, you know, thought you said this is what will serve the utilities needs, but it also served the community. We got zero dollars. Okay. But then the UG got a lot of what they were asking for. So with the request from Iran, which, uh, Sharice Davis, we didn't include the UG. We went by ourselves. We went to Topeka. We made our cake. We went to Washington. We made our cake. We're working with our offices for about two years to get, uh, to receive those, or at least receive approved of all those. I'm still haven't gotten the money yet, but my understanding is just in the pipeline. But that was done with, by us going directly by ourselves. And I would expect that there will be times where we'll have to steal the debt.
I think you.
I, I do know Monday, uh, this is the last thing, unless you got quite more questions. Monday I was asked to go to Topeka to meet with the lieutenant governor, with the mayor and the county administrator. I'm still trying to understand what's all on the agenda for that trip. So, oh, once I understand, I'll, I'll let you know.
That's coming up.
Monday, Monday. Right, right. So I think they're trying, they're trying to narrow the list down to here's what they want to, a quick question from the governor's office. Uh, and through the department of commerce. Just, I'm, I'm not, I don't have that short list. I've heard bits and pieces of what they're trying to do, but I, I don't know exactly what the ask is going to be.
On the inflation reduction part, is that?
Well, I don't know which, which funding button it's going to hit, because I don't have, I don't have, I don't have the short list of what they're going to specifically ask for. I have, uh, the lieutenant governor ourselves, myself, and said that, uh, hey, there are some things that BPU is interested in from the state and, uh, so we'll be having some conversations just with the, from the utility with the mayor's office as well.
Thank you.
With the governor's office. I'm sorry, not the mayor's office.
It's hard to get them confused. Um.
Been a long.
I meant it's easy. Um, so, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, so I think that brings us to the utility rebate program presentation.
Yeah, thanks. Got a presentation here. So yeah, as you guys know, a few weeks back, you guys brought up the idea of incorporating a low income rebate program. And so that went to work trying to find an efficient and effective way of, of implementing a program that we could stand up pretty quickly. And, and do some things for, for those most at need. And so we, we looked at a number of different, um, areas that are collecting that data today. And one of those areas is the unified government. And so our recommendation today is to utilize the, the unified government's low income senior tax rebate program that they already have in place today. Um, as, as our criteria here at BPU's low income rebate program. And so we're looking at implementing that, um, here soon, September twenty twenty-three, and that would run, that cycle would run through May twenty twenty-four. And so the current UG low income senior rebate program uses an application window of January through March. So that's where they go through those applications from the twenty twenty-two calendar year. Um, and look at those applicants and see who, who those recipients could be. And so the current UG program is currently based on all of the following. So you must be a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. You must be at least sixty-five years of age and have a, a gross household income of twenty-five thousand dollars or less, um, during that calendar year. And so the current program that the UG has approved five hundred and fifty-two recipients during the twenty twenty-three review period. So that's based on twenty twenty-two documentation. This is quite a bit lower than they've seen in some previous years. So in the twenty nineteen review period, they had about twelve hundred recipients. Um, so I think it ebbs and flows, but it's a little bit lower, uh, than it has been historically. So that's where it sits today. So our recommendation is to automatically accept and enroll all BPU customers that are recipients of the UG senior tax rebate program into our own BPU low income rebate program. And so we, we recommend that we implement this at the September billing cycle, uh, so here very soon. And then it would run through the May twenty twenty-four, uh, billing cycle. Whereas then coming in June twenty twenty-four, we would implement this, the new cycle. Um, but each recipient as part of this program would receive a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month. So from September twenty twenty-three through May twenty twenty-four, assuming they remain an active customer during that time. So essentially that five dollars was created based off of the expectation of the base rate increase on the electric side. So the base rate increase on the electric side for the average typical customer is four dollars and forty-four cents, I believe it is. Um, and so that more than covers the base rate increase of, of what those customers would see, um, over that timeframe. Um, as you know, and I know Rose asked about it, the UG is currently working on a revision to that senior tax rebate program. And so I know it's pretty far along. Obviously I don't know that it's going to be adopted for certain, but, uh, it sounds like it's pretty far along. And so if it is adopted, uh, the recommend date, or I should go before we go to the recommendation, is that these are the requirements of what the new program would look like. And their application on that program would run January one through effectively April fifteenth, the tax season. So it may go to April eighteenth, those type of things, but essentially January one through April fifteenth. Um, and those new requirements, uh, pertaining to that program would be based on all of the following, essentially a BPU account holder. Uh, they'd be sixty-five years of age or disabled. Uh, this program would be both for Kansas City, Kansas residents, as well as Edwardsville residents, um, that, that take water service from BPU. And it'd be based on the individual applicant's gross income. It must be thirty-seven, seven fifty or less. Um, and it only includes fifty percent of the social security or SSI payments. And it excludes all social security disability payments as well as veteran, veteran and railroad disability payments. So you can kind of see the differences between the two programs, one both based on the household, one based on the individual applicant. And this one, um, excludes fifty percent of social security, uh, income that, that that individual sees, as well as obviously a higher income base. Um, and as well as based off of either age or disability, either one. And so we'll see if that program is approved. I, I think it's expected to be here relatively soon and it'll go through the full commission. If the UG adopts the new low income senior disabled tax rebate program, the BPU will adopt the new UG program requirements and recipients into our low income rebate program. If they maintain the current rebate programs, uh, the BPU staff would expect to maintain and adopt the current standards that are out there today. We're going into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five rebate cycle, so beginning in June twenty twenty-four. So as soon as the other rebate cycle ends, a new rebate cycle begins. And so in June twenty twenty-four, the rebate cycle would look more like this. Is each recipient that is an electric only customer will receive a, a monthly rebate credit of five dollars per month. Each recipient that is a water only customer will receive a monthly rebate credit of two dollars and fifty cents. And each recipient that is both an electric and water customer will receive a monthly rebate credit of seven dollars and fifty cents. Staff recommends setting an initial budgetary cap of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the low income rebate program. But every year staff will recommend and the board will approve the budgetary value for the BPU low income rebate program as part of your annual budget process, just like you do all the other budgetary items in the budget. This will be something that you will approve a budget number each year. BPU will pay out the full monthly rebate to each recipient awarded under this program for the full rebate cycle or until all funds are allocated through the budget process are exhausted. So this is where if the funds ran out, tho- those funds would run out of the program. If the board elected to do a, a budget transfer from one account to the other, uh, because they wanted to change some things after the fact, they could do so. Um, so really we will know what the count of the recipients are and therefore what the funds would be required really in, in May of each year. And therefore you would know in, in, at that time, how much that program would cost and therefore whether you wanted to do a budget reallocation to that account or how you'd want to move those funds or around it, if you so chose. Next slide, please. And obviously there's a, a lot of other additional assistance available. And we just want to make sure that both BPU, the unified government and all the parties would be, um, encourage and explore all those programs as much as possible. I mean, obviously we already have some programs today, utility assistance, hardship assistance, BPU funded today. There's agency assistance programs. There's LEAK, uh, there's EWAP on the water side, KWAP on the weatherization assistance, uh, at the UG utility rebate programs, Homestead, uh, and then Bill kind of mentioned this Homes and Hira funding, which is, that's part of the Inflation Reduction Act, that is direct to consumer, uh, funding through both rebates as well as tax credits. A lot of that depends on income levels and those type of things, but it's going to be a, a, a big dollar movement, um, really direct to consumer driven. Um, but it's making sure that collectively us, the unified government and all the other charitable organizations really, really push that. And I'll be really interested to see what kind of, I'll say, private enterprises such as HVAC companies, installation companies, and how those companies market those activities as well, because there's some really big dollars associated with those, those funds there. Uh, from heat pumps to dryers, to stoves, to all sorts of things that both promote efficiency as well as electrification. Um, and on that note, I'll take any questions that you guys have about what we did, what we think, um, what you guys think. Yep.
So, uh, one of the things that I want to make sure that, and maybe I wasn't clear when I brought this up during the, during the meeting where we voted on the rate hearing, is that this program would need the second phase, which would be hitting in July of next year. When the second increase goes into effect, I would expect that that rebate would move up to match that. You know what I mean?
So that, that was the idea of this, this year, right? So beginning September, it's five dollars to cover the full increase of this year.
Yes.
Next year it'll be seven fifty, which will cover all of the increase from next year and this year.
For electric. I thought it was seven fifty, five for water, or two fifty for water and, and five for electric.
So yeah, we, we did, we effectively used those numbers, right? So effectively every resident in KCK would get seven dollars and fifty cents.
Every one that is.
Is electric and water, which is.
Well, is qualified.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So the idea is that if you're Edwardsville, you would still get something.
Two fifty.
Right? That, that is the idea.
Yeah.
Again, you guys choose those paths. If we, if we want to exclude Edwardsville, if we want to change dollars, all of those things are, are choices that, that you guys would drive, but those are numbers. The seven fifty was essentially meant to cover the full base rate increase that would occur over the next two years.
For just electric?
Just for electric. Yeah.
Okay. So then, then we also have to look at, at the water side, although I don't know, did we, I, I didn't really.
Well, seven fifty is for what we're proposing for the entire rebate if you're an electric and water customer.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, okay, so that would take us through July of next year and then the next rate increase kicks in. And it'll be an additional like seven fifty per person.
Are, are you talking on water?
Electric and water.
So, so electric will be four forty four, and then effectively seven forty. So.
Fifty, yeah.
Okay. So effectively seven fifty over those two years, right? And water goes up by a dollar ninety-eight, I'll say each year for the next three years, right?
Right. So yeah, I'm confused because that's not exactly what I was reading in, in, in this.
No, it, it, the idea wasn't to cover every rate increase across all the spectrums. If that's what your idea was.
My idea was.
Change those numbers from being five to seven.
Andrew, let me ask some, let me ask some questions. So Jeff, were you asking seven fifty for the first period? An additional seven fifty for the second period? So now we're talking fifteen dollars?
Well, first of all, it's seven twenty-five.
Yeah. So, so, so let's look at it this way. So if I take five hundred and fifty-five customers and let's say every one of those, let's say every one of those five hundred and fifty-five customers are electric and water recipients from, from the UG and that, or from BPU. And I'm going five fifty-five is roughly. So if I take that from September through April, that's thirty-seven hundred and, or thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, sorry. Thirty-eight thousand dollars out of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, so I'm okay with that. And, and I'm, I'm looking at what that's going to do for the budget. So, so then that same seven fifty would apply until July of next year. July of next year, those numbers are going to go up because there's going to be a second, the second phase of the rate increase will go into effect. The, the, the idea that I envision in my head was basically those people that are, are most vulnerable as far as economic standing in our city are, have learned how to live with utility bills as they are today. But they can't go any farther. So it's how can we cap that? So that they don't see the increases, because they're going to see other increase, they're going to see increases from UG charges and things like that. So, so I want to do what we can to prevent those rate increases from impacting those people.
So if you hold essentially the line on both water and electric, both, right?
Yes, sir.
So that comes out to be effectively, we'll say, six dollars and eighty-five cents, some number like that, right? For, for this, this period today.
Until, until, right, July of next year.
Until July of next year, right? And then so, so if you, you could do six eighty-five today for the next, until, I'll say, really, we, and we could push our cycle to July. We, we have it set in June, but we could set, put it to July. But effectively then you would add, I'll, I'll say, two dollars and fifty cents on the electric side plus another, we'll say, two dollars on the water side. So another four dollars on top of that. I'll say seven.
Would be what they're, what, what, what would hold it? When a normal, a normal resident would see that. What a normal, a normal resident would see that increase next July. Over what they'll be paying, yeah. And that's that's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for to go beyond necessarily. You know, if if it is whatever, seven bucks, we say it's seven bucks through. Through July of next year and then in July of next year, whatever that new increase. Calculates to, that's how much I want them to also be. Applicable to the rebate for those for those uh customers that fall under the. Programs requirements.
Yes, so you you, yeah, I mean, all that stuff is known for the typical, right?
So yeah, yeah, and I mean, that's all you can do. You can only base it up with what the average homeowner's bill is.
So so the one thing we know today is exactly the the headcount that went through the U G program for. Twenty twenty two year, twenty twenty three view periods. So you know exactly what that number is, can multiply it out times whatever that dollar amount is. So if we said seven fifty today for to cover water and electric, right? Uh you would know exactly what that number is.
Yeah, it's about thirty eight thousand dollars for from now into September through April.
Okay, yep. And so beginning next year. You wouldn't know coming in at least to the budget process what that number would be, right? So that therefore that's that's the purpose of having a a cap is because I'm not going to sell I O Us out. How to do that. And then you guys can decide. How you want to allocate those funds once those numbers are known, which will be known in in May, right? Assuming assuming the new. Because it's under the new, under the new scenario, it opens up.
A lot.
A lot of households, a lot of households. And that's again. That's that's what it does. And so if that's the route we go, then we can we can review those numbers once we know those numbers. And so, yeah, we could, we could do that.
Hang on. So just just to be clear, the five hundred and fifty two, I think it is, recipients, right, that are listed in there, whatever the numbers. Um you know, we had a a significant discussion about this with Monica Sparks at the U G. When we were talking about pilot reaction and um five hundred and fifty two recipients. Is what we wound up having. Um but the the problem is, we've ident- we generally identify between. B P U information and unified government information, we think there's roughly sixty five hundred, potentially. Um sixty five hundred residents that are eligible for it under today's guideline. It's not that, it's not that, oh, my gosh, we're going to open the floodgates, people aren't applying. And so that's part of the problem, right? Um and I think we need to, and they've done a, they've tried to do. Um you know, an additional campaign this year to get that information out, help people, you know. Actually go through and sign up for the program. And I know that we're going to rely on their data, but I don't think we should sit here and think that, oh, my gosh, the floodgate's going to open, it's going to be seventeen thousand.
And that's, did that sixty five hundred, did that, and was that only those that were sixty five years of age? Or is that those that fell underneath the underneath the.
The the best data we had available to us that that might.
Because this this talk, you know, I I thought it was for low B P U low income. Not B P U low income under sixty five years of age. So if if I'm a single parent, mother or father, and I made less than twenty five under this twenty five thousand dollars. I wouldn't qualify for this.
That's right.
I, that's not how I understood. I thought it was a low income rebate program for B P U customers, not senior customers. Well, and we had that conversation among ourselves. Uh I thought. The quickest way to launch this is to follow the U the U G program. Now, if you don't want to do that, we can go back and redesign something.
Okay, I don't have any problem following the, you know, for that. With that segment of the customers that fall underneath the B P U program, except those, but then have a. An application or whatever, however you do it, that would have basically the same information and same criteria as the U G, except. Age.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have no problem taking the five hundred and fifty two recipients and immediately bring them into the program. I think that's the right thing to do. And it's the easiest way to do it is then the program's already, you know. You you cut out having to do all the applications, but you know, and that and we're using the criteria that the U G had developed. But I would like to remove the age limitation on on this. This is for, this is for a, this is a low income rebate, not a senior low income rebate.
So in a short period of time where we could, you said, bring something back for the night?
I know.
Okay, this is, okay, so what do we do? What information do we have on our customers and and which is very little, okay?
It's going to be a, they're going to have to apply. Yeah, it's not going to be a, we can take the ones that the U G already have, but beyond that, they're going to have to apply.
Well, and and so what what the U G has done, right, they're following the state listed exemption statute. And so the only thing that's different would be the age requirement.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
I mean, so you take out the age requirement, you still follow the others. You know, so either and and by the way, I did look it up and they did. In the Health and Human Services Standing Committee on July twenty fourth, they did adopt the new guidelines.
Through the Standing Committee.
That's correct. And it's and it's obviously the full commission at some point.
Yep.
But. So that so that's the difference. And and I I think, you know, from from B P U's perspective. Um you guys would like, staff would likely have to figure out. If if we take that component away, then we can't exactly follow the five fifty two straight through. Because that's a package deal, right? So we would have to come up with our own application process and figure out how to administer that internally. And I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm confident that staff could not do this quickly. As adopting what's what the U G is.
And my argument would be it's going to be expensive.
Yeah, we don't know what the budget's going to be.
You have, you have to stand staff uh go through W two, and then you have to deal with the data that you collect, right? You're you're collecting, so it's security numbers, you're collecting incomes, all those things that have to be handled in a special way. So all those things are are just things that you're going to incur expense and therefore is that expense. Efficient enough to cover where you're trying to get to, right? Are you hitting enough extra households to cover the additional expense that you carry out?
I'm pretty sure we're spending some money on some some cybersecurity anyway, so.
Protects some of the people trying to hack into the utility.
Understood, but that's for data, that's for data, which we're the repository of this data, we're supposed to secure it.
Yes, but they're going to bring in their W twos, right? They're going to bring all those those data. So that the the idea is that we would utilize outside sources that already do all this stuff today, right? So we looked at LEAP and those programs that already collect all this data. The problem is, is that LEAP, one, isn't timely, and two, doesn't know if they can share. And so those are the challenges with utilizing outside organization and therefore do you recreate the wheel to spend the money? To catch a segment of population.
So here's one thing I would also ask. Here's one thing I would also remind the board of. Uh so if we follow this, okay. A little bit of a concern that I've got is we're trying to rebate. Money back to our customers because we have a rate increase and and we were, think we would justify it in active for a rate increase. I think the work is justified in in approving the rate increase, okay? So taking that aside, we did just go and visit the U G. We've asked them to consider reducing the pilot, okay? I don't see why they're doing that. Okay, so if we're we're looking at this year and now we're talking about a conversation for next year on increasing. The U G don't do anything, okay? Now we're carrying all of this. All of this customer support rebate back to our community. And the U G is not even helping us out with anything. Other than just maintaining and and their rate increases.
I don't, I don't think we, we got the U G, we need to take care of our customers.
And I think that we can fight back on the U G as far as those dollars that we rebate. Well, we should not have to, we should not have to send pilot dollars to the U G for the dollars that we rebate, because we did not collect them.
Okay, so one thing I'm concerned about, Tom, with the U G is it's asking us to pay for stormwater, okay? We've never paid for that, okay? So now they're asking. E P U's have to pay this and we don't pay, they don't pay us for anything. So this is going, that's a conversation I'm still.
I'm, hang on a sec, like, have they made an official ask that we pay for stormwater now? Or was that sort of come out of the joint meeting?
Yes, it it has come up at the staff level that this is what's going to be asked of of the utility.
Okay, well, I think I know what our response is.
Yes, I know. I I know, I know, I know what our response is, but it it may be something just.
Sorry, Wendy.
Well, I I prefer to separate that issue from this issue. And thi- this issue to me is. You know, we we know that we have a segment of our population that is already. Floundering. Uh for lack of a better word. And. You know, I'm okay if we put in just the first year as it stands and next year. It's it's a policy so we can revise, it's a program, so we can, we can go in and make the revision. You know, I want, I'd like to get this going, the five fifty two, but I would like to. Figure out how we can take the age requirement away. Because there are a lot of people in our city that are less than sixty five that are struggling with their payments.
All, I mean, less than six five years old. All of my previous prior discussion I just had was, okay, if we go with this. For the first year, that still gives us time to figure out what the second year looks like. And it also gives us time to have a conversation with the U G. B P U's already committed to this. If we move into the second phase. You know, how can the U G help? Get us there.
So is the U G's is going to be. Still going to be age.
Age or disabled.
Well, age defined or disabled. So the only exception to the age restriction is going to be the safe.
Correct.
And I don't know.
Well, the income level will be different.
Yeah. There's an income requirement for both, but yes.
That'll be high.
Away, if you have somebody that's forty seven years old, that's making twenty four thousand dollars a year and just, you know. I mean, and there we have people that are doing that and they're not surviving. They're not going to be eligible.
So so Andrew, if you guys looked at this, and I know, I know that you did, and and you guys, first of all. Um thank you on the condensed timeframe for coming back to the board and bringing this to us. This is a phenomenal start, so thank you for for doing that. Um but you've obviously looked at, you know, potentially some costs associated with if the board goes this way or the other way. Um would it be um too great of an ask by the end of October? For you all to come back with, I'm not saying don't move forward with the program today as it as it's proposed, I'm not saying don't do that. Would it be possible by the end of October to come back with what those proposed costs potentially look like? If we remove the age requirement and somehow the B P U had to manage this.
Yep.
On its own.
I think so. And and details on how we could administer. You know, what what it would, what it would look like, the administration of.
Yeah, I I think we can, we can put some, you know, challenge into different things. And again, it it goes back to, you know, like I said, you know, data a little bit, but you know, labor and staff time and those type of things. And and again, you can decide if there's enough efficiency there in terms of, I got to spend an extra this much money on staff time. Does it make sense to catch another five thousand people or three thousand people or whatever the the counts are, right? So I think we can do something.
Well, and looking at it, I just did a quick number check. So so if sixty five hundred, if if roughly half, let's say thirty five hundred. Actually applied for that on a twelve month period of seven fifty, there you're up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And what that, what what do we give to the hardship right now? What's in our budget, a hundred and fifty? What's more than a hundred?
Hundred.
You got.
Hundred tens?
You got the hardship, about a hundred and ten for a hundred, glory, a hundred and ten for utility assistance. A hundred and fifty for hardship, I believe.
Right.
I know one's a hundred and fifty, I just didn't know the other one.
It's a hundred and ten for.
Utility assistance.
Utility assistance. Hundred and twenty five.
Hundred twenty five.
I thought it was a hundred and fifty for hardship.
That is demonstration. It's about a hundred thousand.
It's about a hundred thousand actually makes it out to the.
And a hundred and ten's utility assistance.
And how how much do we have in the heat pump program? Ninety five thousand ish?
Uh I don't have the budget book in front of me, so.
How much do we allocate in the budget for the heat pump program? Understood, and for three years I've asked for that to be a separate line item, so hopefully this year it will be. Because that doesn't make sense. But I think the allocation ninety five is what's allocated really to the heat pump program, I think.
I think so, yes.
That came, that came up in the day's meeting. The state is looking for us to continue on that. And they're trying to get every G to push harder on the heat line. So.
They can ask.
My whole bill's funding, it's not, it may not be a requirement, so if if. If we come up empty on state funding, because we're giving that money back somewhere else and then we're actually.
Uh we don't, if it doesn't funnel down to us from the state, we don't necessarily have to continue that program.
And and some of the stuff on that homes and hero that I mentioned just a little bit, which is direct to consumer type of type of stuff. But but the feds are giving out up to eight thousand dollars for heat faults. And so that's regardless of whatever the utilities in the area do. And obviously it's based on income, right? So depending on where you're at on the income sector, if it can be up to eight thousand dollars, direct rebate. Direct rebate, so it's not even you you paying for something, it's direct rebate. So um though there there is. We do expect to see, you know, come the end of the year timeframe, that a lot of that stuff's going to start popping up on on some radars and so forth. But um we're watching it, but there is. A sizable chunk on on this electrification and efficiency stuff, whether it be just weatherization and energy efficiency and. Go forward. So um yeah, regardless of what we do, and so again. You guys can all choose where those budget dollars get allocated and we're best at using them, so.
Like you said, we also have economic development, which has not been kept much at all for the last four to five years.
Right. And and I think I'm just thinking, I'm confident you guys did not have any further discussion about. Um with uh to restate his office about. The potential for implementing a universal service program for electric, a universal service program for electric customers. We're giving thirty dollars a customer to qualifying broadband customers right now, the feds are. We're giving seventy five dollars. Per household in rural areas and we're giving nothing to electric customers. And, you know, look, I work in the broadband industry, it's really, really important, but it's it's as important as electricity. That's what I just can't, you can't make heads or tails.
Well, you know, the state's focus is on rural Kansas and rural America, and that's where most of the funding is going.
I I get it.
I know.
I I I know.
I know. You know, we can, we can certainly go back and ask and keep pushing. It just becomes. Okay, here are all the opportunities. So where does those opportunities line up? You know, is this more beneficial to the community versus this? And I mean, that's the decision later on, it's going to come around.
And I think some of the struggle, I'll say from the federal level down to the electric company is so much. I O U's eat up so much of the the mass of the United States that therefore. Their concern is how do I use an I O U to to do these things, whereas broadband and and some of these other things are, you know. Municipal styles, government things that I can use the actual city to do things that way, right? So those are the challenges. And if we're being a municipal, we we have certain advantages on some of these programs that we'd like to to push forward. And whether you can get ever G that again is over Wichita and Topeka and these other communities that, hey, can we all agree on something? Well, if ever G doesn't agree, it's hard for us all to kind of push in some of those same directions. But um we're having some of those conversations on on some of those different programs to see if.
Well, but the reason why the state and the feds are pushing ever G, you know, why they want ever G there is just the sheer size of it.
Yep.
Maybe B P U's is really a small utility.
Yep, yep.
Whereas those programs can get spread out over a larger area if every G's at the table.
Especially.
I think I've got worrying.
Of any federal funding and then what, you know, it's kind of like the smart stuff when they did all the stuff in Midtown. They got a certain rate of return for using federal dollars and then they got money for their stockholders by using public dollars. And then that's going to be what they have.
So I I did hear a little bit of Mary right there. I just wanted to confirm, you know, you guys talked about moving forward with what it is. And obviously reevaluate the way we look. What it is and obviously reevaluate the way we look into twenty-four, twenty-five cycle. Um. But initially, we haven't set at five dollars. Jeff, did did you want to move it to seven?
But no, if you look at it.
Four, twenty-five cycle is this is full seven.
Oh, okay. I I was looking at it as, yeah, it was going to be if they're electric and a water, you know.
And and so everybody today really should generally be electric and water customers because these are K C K residents only. Where the next, I'll say the next cycle would include Edwardsville and so forth.
So does the U G include Edwardsville in there?
On their next program, that they're well, looking at doing is will include Edward.
And I don't see a reason to not include Edwardsville now. I really don't.
So.
There are a water.
There are water customers, I.
Yeah, they're just not on the U U G program, right? So we don't have a a mechanism.
They do, they do have, they do have.
Right. And obviously, there's not, not many, but.
No.
But yeah, so on the next program, the U G will will measure against those. Edwardsville customers as well. Um, obviously, they'll just have have on the water side. But I wanted to confirm, you know, the dollar amount that you guys are are anticipating. Again, we we came in here with five. And if if you're thinking seven fifty to cover both, both segments, right? Seven fifty covers all all water and all electric. Base rating increases across.
This year.
For this year, from from essentially, I'll say August of this year through July, June and next year. So.
And by then, we'll know what the U G is doing with their program.
Yes, well, yeah, we should know here actually pretty soon, I think. Um. It it seemed like they were getting close and so.
And if they do their change, they're still not gonna do it till next spring.
Correct, okay.
So they would, they would have the the January through April fifteenth timeframe to look at, you know, twenty twenty-three's data, so.
Yeah, and as far as for expedience, I'm I'm okay with moving forward with this one for now with the idea that. Yeah, hopefully like October, we can sit back down and we can talk about it and we can look at. What would the cost be and what what does the implementation look like?
Yep.
Uh, for moving it into, you know, moving it beyond sixty-five and over. You know, and beyond just even the new one with the disabled or sixty-five, just moving it to all low income. So.
Yep, we can, we can look at what that might look like.
And I will still have a conversation with the U G about helping out.
Uh, and I, and I have no problem with that whatsoever. I think that, I think that there's a point that this is not. A matter of B P U or U G. This is a matter of Wyandotte County.
But I know, and that's the approach on it.
So this, this needs to be what we can do all in, all of us together to help our most vulnerable citizens in our.
And all these fees are collected on the bill. So B P U, the only one paying back. Then it relies part of the problem right there.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if they're, if they're, some of them are committed to doing some type of rebate by pilot. And it may not be moving forward on with this budget cycle, which is what is my understanding.
Yeah, well, I know that they're gonna. They're gonna have a capital gain of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of pilot.
Yep.
For because of the increases, so.
So if I'm reading it right, they're financing some of their debt with that, pushing it farther out to the future, okay? Just giving them more room. You know, coming back to the community to say, okay. Here's how we give back. B P U's giving back, U G's not giving back. They're just setting aside some future debt with the additional revenue. That they're collecting. Uh. They'd have a conversation about separating the bill just last week. That's not on their radar. So but 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 I did get a commitment to come back in two months. And they will come, try to come up with a plan on how to separate, so.
Okay. I'd like to get a commitment from them to have another B P U, U G. Mission leading.
Yeah.
In six months from the last one, it'd be nice if we could do it every six months.
Yeah.
I think.
That's.
Right.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Do we need to update the resolution?
That's what, well, we will have to change the resolution.
Well, the solution is only for five.
I think it says five dollars on the resolution.
And it was for the second year.
Yeah, it it had to have both the areas, just for the one year for the seven. If you said it was seven, not seven fifty, closer to seven, six eighty something.
I I think that's about where it comes in.
So we could just say that that's seven.
Okay.
And that would cover the water and electric increase for the. Until. Next July.
Correct. So we run it to the end of June. We run it through the end of June. Yep, we'll run it through the end of June.
Um, yeah, cause by then we should have.
Yeah, we should, we should get the information, but yeah. We we gotta work for October and.
Yeah.
And and the U G's doing what they're, they're doing. And so we'll, we'll kind of all get back together.
So we're just talking about these five hundred and fifty-two people right now?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so how does Janetta flag that? How, what kind of a process is that?
We're, are you talking about the fines?
The ones that already.
Five hundred and fifty-two customers that we have, how? How do you plug your account to get that rebate?
So we'll have a fee, a fee. We're gonna get the list of customers from the unified government.
Okay.
And then we have a fee that we can apply on a monthly basis to those customers.
Okay.
That will give them a credit.
Alright.
And then we'll calculate pilot.
Now, after the.
After the.
Now, is that five hundred and fifty-two? Are those households or are those individuals?
Individuals.
So.
They they'll, that's only, that's based off household.
Yeah, it's a bill.
It's it's a total household. That's that's a household.
But there is utility customers.
Yeah.
Cause they had to provide their utilities.
It's one resident.
So five hundred and fifty-two residents.
Residents.
Residents or accounts, B P U account.
Yeah.
It could, it's not like Kay and I live in a house, so she's gonna get seven dollars back and I'm gonna get seven.
No, no, it'll just be for that one bill just being paid.
So how does the resolution read now?
So right now, it says that for um. From September one, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, um, there'll be an electric rebate credit of five dollars per month. And then it goes on to say the following years, the elected board will establish funding and budgetary caps for the program during the budget process. And then the next one talks about for electric and then water and then electric and water. So right now, it reads that for twenty, September twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, it's just a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars. And why is it only electric again? So what I missed?
So we have electric-only customers and not give them, if they don't have water service. Then not to give them benefit out of it all.
Well, it would be five.
It's only five dollars for electric customers.
But it should be five for electric, two for water, if that makes you right, seven and seven for electric and.
That's all in there, isn't it?
No, that's, that's on next year.
Not, that's next.
Ah, got you.
And and essentially, the the five dollars was meant to cover the full electric base rate increase, was the idea behind.
Yeah.
And so again, we went back and listened to the, you know, the tapes.
I might not have been.
And it was like everything, right? A lot of, a lot of speaking up all around, so. We did it based off the best information we had at the time. And and again, we're here to get your opinion on on what we came back with, so.
I appreciate, I may not have been as clear as I could have been during that, but yeah, I was hoping it to be.
So with those, whereas you got the separation between electric, water and 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 toll. And I mean, that's what I was reading and I didn't.
Hmm, but that's only as of June twenty twenty-four.
Now, that's.
Alright, okay, okay.
So we could just change that first, whereas to say they will be. Wish to provide a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month. And a monthly water rebate credit of two dollars per month.
Good, okay.
For or from September first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty.
Where eligible be counted, which and that's.
Right.
Yeah, they have to be eligible for both or one or the other.
Yeah, we're gonna run it through.
Or Chris, whoever needs to make it. I don't have a word version of it, so I. Well, that's.
Well, it's gonna be, if if the person is only electric and not getting water, I don't know that we have very many that doesn't want it, in case you can.
So if if I.
So they would only get the five.
Now, if I was one five fifty-two and I take electric and water, what's my rebate?
Gonna be in September, seven dollars. So that's what we would put. So we would just need to add all that language in the bottom up to that third whereas clause. And we can either, do you want us to do that right now or do you want?
Yeah.
Chris to do it?
Let's do whatever the board has.
So what I would envision then is it would be, say, it would say. Where it says the elected board on the third whereas clause. Provide. A monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month, comma. A water, a monthly water rebate credit of two dollars per month. Or a combined. Water. And electric credit of seven dollars per month.
Electric and water.
Electric. Rebate credit.
And.
And water.
Water.
Rebate credit. Of seven dollars per month.
Then you're gonna take the rest of it out.
From September one, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. And and do you take that through June thirty?
I I do think that needs to be a little refined, just a little bit.
Hmm.
So the board with, the elected board wishes to provide a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month to. Customers who receive electric service only or something along those lines. Okay, and if that's the case, then if we're not going to distinguish between the first period and the second period, then all that other stuff can come out. What we could do instead is just change that to say for both phases. We will be giving them a credit and it's gonna follow all those other whereas things. And we could just change the years.
Probably gonna change next year because of the.
And it. And it could, it could.
Rob, put water only under the water credit. Just like you did electric-only customers, water only.
Yeah.
Okay. So this first one is going to be set water.
Well.
I mean, electric or electric and water.
Yep.
But no water.
Okay, well, then that makes it a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Because.
Or so what she's saying is there won't be that second, a monthly water rebate credit of two dollars because no one would qualify for just that.
Yeah, so it just go jump to a or combined.
So every five hundred and twenty-four. We're not doing it yet with.
Not, not yet. That would be a.
Right.
And we'll follow the.
So we definitely need everything else separated out because that would include then Edwardsville first.
Yeah.
Yes.
So so the. If whereas down, from there down, it's kind of like.
And that would stay the same because they would need a separation since that would incorporate Edwardsville at that point, and you would have only water customers.
But I think, well.
But we.
But come back with a different.
But we're gonna come back with a different resolution because it's going to change.
Yeah.
Because of that, we're gonna change the.
And if that's the case, then we could take all that out.
Yeah.
You do, yeah, it seems a lot easier. Yeah.
Yeah.
That needs to be on some mention.
No, it can be on the same page.
Oh, you have to change that from May thirty to May thirty-one.
Down below to where. From the bottom of the page.
Out there.
May thirty-one should be June. Up lower.
Yeah. Then take it out of. For September through December, we're gonna take it out of. Do my sponsorships.
Okay.
It's gonna be else.
And it's right there.
I'm just.
Hmm.
So actually, so what you're saying, Janetta, is we're gonna, the people we have will have both. They're not gonna have one or the other for this.
Well, they could have only electric.
Only like, okay.
Because this is the.
That's right. Okay.
But nobody's gonna be water only, because that would be Edwardsville.
Right.
He did.
So you mind pulling that up one more time, Robert?
Yes.
September.
Sorry, we're taking all your time. So we're taking all your time.
That's okay. That's. I just wanna make sure we get through and move it over.
No, I agree.
Well, and that's challenging, moving quickly, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Nimble is not always easy.
Could you scroll up so I could see the full now there? Great, please, and thank you.
So I am at the top, so let me.
Yes.
And I'm not transmitting this, I still pitch into translation. Not transmitting this on Zoom.
Okay, okay.
That's a good idea.
Electric rebate credit of five dollars per month. So the, that sentence, a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month needs to mirror that whereas section.
Credits are here.
Hmm.
Sphere.
Where we say to.
One down.
Yeah, to provide a monthly electric rebate credit of five dollars per month to electric only or combined. Yep.
And. Right, and yeah.
Yep. That looks good.
So. How will these people know why they got that reduction on their bill?
I would imagine we'll put out a notice on the website and in their, maybe a flyer.
Yeah.
On their, head out of their bill.
And we'll see what information we can go get back from a lot. I guess we have, we'll have information on their account information and so forth.
There's also.
I see.
It'll tell them, yeah.
Alright.
Yes.
I mean, we're specific. When I get credit.
I I would be nice if we actually got phone calls, people ask, why? They got a credit.
It'd just be nice that people acknowledge that they.
That's what I mean. That would, that would be the acknowledgement.
So.
Well, that keeps our bill neutral.
That's what's on the bills, where people got credit, right? Not, not across our country.
We can specify.
Right, yep. Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna. We've got an agreement on resolution.
The only thing, can you scroll to the second page of that? Okay. Okay, yep.
Thank you all for the, the work. I know it was.
Uh.
I know it was timely and difficult, but. We, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you for the healthy conversation. I didn't know how long it was gonna take, but. But thank you for all your input. Uh. Uh, Lori, uh, passed out or are you, what are you, what are you doing? So here's our. Lo- Lori's passing, that what Rob has or is that a different version?
Rob has that.
Okay. A different version?
Is that the one I emailed you, Rob?
Uh, yeah. Uh.
It looks like a lot of different versions. So part of that is just background stuff the staff is working on.
Is this one?
This is the same email one, right?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So board asked for schedule for. Twenty twenty-four budget, so kind of laid out, uh. His schedule, I mean, uh. Some of it is. You still gotta do some background work on setting the system up. Still gotta do a number of other things, uh. Before we even get to the. Uh, staffing discussion. I guess I don't know. Is. Other than just providing information on the schedule, is there any other conversation? Need to have or or just kind of where do we go here?
Well, I I think from my perspective, um. You know, I've been through this process a couple of times now. And, you know, one of the things that I've noted during this process is. I have, by the time we. By the time we get that this information is presented to the board. This information is, um. I don't wanna say it's set in stone, but that's certainly how it would appear. And so any input that the board. Would.
And so any input that the board would. You know, provide or questions the board has on whether or not things could be shifted or or not. Um, I've just never, and I've witnessed board members ask various things, right? And I've just never seen any board members question or. For revision or anything like that. I've never seen it it approved. So, uh, you know, from my perspective, uh, you know, I understand that the two things that this board is responsible for. According to everybody allegedly who reads the charter is that we are to, we hire and fire you, Bill. Which looks like we hire and hire you, Bill. Oh, and and approve or disapprove, I guess, the budget. And, uh, you know, if if that's the case, and there really isn't. You know, if there's not real input that the board can provide. But, you know, I mean. I don't know what other board members think, but I mean, this is a long. A long way to get us to November twenty second, when you hand us a book that says, here's the budget. We'll go through the retreat, you'll ask your questions, but everything's a foregone conclusion at that point. So for me, it's not, it's not useful. It's not, um. You know, it's it's not a good use of of time when we could be working, we could spending a lot of time working maybe on policies that need to be updated and. Things that we actually have. Um, ability to. You know, to provide some meaningful input and perhaps change.
What, can you give me an example of what you would, what input? I mean. I don't know anything about capital projects, whatever they present to me and the cost of them, I'm assuming. That that's what they have determined that the utility needs. Can you give me, I mean. What do I need input on? What what else do we need to be telling them how to fix the budget?
So so from my perspective, I've heard a a board, a former board member in the past, ask the question of. You know, hey, in this particular functional area, whatever it was, right? Can we reduce, you know, the operating expense by one percent, right? Can we reduce this by one percent? And the answer was absolutely, we could not because we're at November, whatever we're at.
Okay.
And or even, yeah, or even December at that point, what we're at. And the answer is no, because again, it's a foregone conclusion that what's in here is what is needed. And so, um, you know, I don't know if we can take last year's budget book, and I mean us board members, I don't mean that staff has to. And go, well, I was really concerned about this expenditure last year or this expenditure or this headcount last year, right? Um, those are just some examples that come to my mind.
Well, I know when it comes to staffing, it seems like. Everybody on the board has an opinion or argues about staffing. I mean, if you've been sitting in these meetings. That's, you know, so. It seems like we just have the argument and go on. So what, I don't know. What input we.
I will tell you that a question I have asked multiple times that I've never gotten an answer to is. For this size utility, and when we look at similarly situated utilities in size. Um, you know, perhaps, you know, operating expense, et cetera, right? Um, what what is staffing supposed to look like? Is it seven hundred and twelve? Is it three hundred and fourteen? I don't know. And that's not been, I've never been successful in getting a response on that one. Because because what I've heard many times in the rate hearing this year was that, you know, we have. I I actually heard we laid off people once, and I know that that is not the case. Um, but I also heard that, you know, we have reduced staffing by ten percent. I heard both of those things, right? Well, what we've done is we we have taken away open positions that this board has approved. Year after year after year, right? And so what I'm concerned about is, and what I don't really know the answer to. Are we doing like other companies are doing right now? And, you know, for profit companies and saying, we want, you know, three people to do the work of six. I don't, I just don't know the answer to it because I've never, I don't know if seven twelve or three fourteen is the right answer. I don't know. Those are things I get concerned about.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I know we're getting close to the hour. Uh, some of the concerns, and I didn't support, you know, the budget. I can tell you right now, I I would wanna see some change and augmenting a little bit what, you know, what rose to thing. My concern is to look at what we have and retool it in a meaningful way for it to be more. Uh, customer friendly. You know my broken records for those of us who remember what records are. I wanna see an abbreviated lobby reopened. And where we find that in this budget or some future budget is gonna be key to like, you don't need my support this year. Uh, as we know, um, for the budget to pass, I'll say that here in August. Um, you.
I think that's a pretty bold statement.
Well, I can count, okay, Mary? And so, uh. But if you ever need my support, I think it's good for me to put on the table during this process. Why I uh presuppose. Um, why I won't be supporting this budget way back in August, uh, when.
That's one vote. Sorry, that's one vote.
Exactly. And you don't need.
You don't need my vote right now.
A moot point for you to even attend.
Well, no, but I should share, I, this budget can be broader and acceptable to. More members of the board. That's what I'm saying. And I mean, I can't just say. For or against something without explaining why I'm for or against. And I'd like to share that. And again, I'll lay that on the table again. We should be looking at abbreviated lobby opening in excess for that. And it won't take that much to.
And that one, that one item is enough to make you vote against the whole.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not. There are others, but as as Rose, as Rose mentioned, one of hers looking at staffing, that was a concern. That was one thing uh for staffing. Um, that she said, but that may or may not be the one item that has her supported or not supported. That's a major one for me.
So my my question would be then, you're, I mean, what I'm hearing is that. That you're not really willing to compromise and a lot of times that's what it is. Because we have six board members and everybody has their own opinions on what they would like to see the expenditures go toward.
Right.
And and. You wanting a the a lobby. Is that one is the example because you laid it out, is you wanting the lobby open may not resonate with the rest of the board members. It may not resonate with the majority of the board members. And. You're you're. Saying that, you know, that would be one big reason why you would not vote is saying that you're not willing to compromise to understand why others. May not want that or and take away at being the lobby opening, any other point on the budget that's a, that's a. Push point for you. Others may not have a problem with that, but they may have a problem with something else that you want. So, I mean, that's.
When is it, when is the time to bring those type of issues up?
That's sort of my point.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Right, because we don't, because it's it's, it comes to us. We don't.
Is it?
The work sessions. I mean, we do a work session on staffing, on capital projects, on.
Over and over again.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm wondering about what Andrew really usually always presents. I mean. We're looking at the most unusual weather, I mean, worldwide, not just here. Our job is to make sure our customers have power and water. I, you know.
Right, and.
And that's important.
One thing that concerns me is that we had testimony by staff. In the rate hearing that said. We are not factoring in the the crazy weather. That's concerning to me, hugely concerning to me, right?
Well, I, that's. We all can point to our focus on that than the lobby being open. I know, but if we don't have power, then the lights aren't gonna be on in your lobby.
That and a small budgetary change, which we could show how it could be with a lobby to be open. Structure, what the, I mean, it was done right here on fly, but it did work out what the percentage would be. And how that would be incorporated for the electric and water. I mean, it certainly opened to discussion. No, I'm I'm not an iconoclast. So this is what exactly it should be. No, I certainly wanna see how it can work. Open to to buy what would be. I don't ever expect us to speak a previous lobby as it existed prior to the pandemic. I think we'll probably be beyond that. That's not what I'm asking or requesting, but we need an abbreviated one that's accessible.
And my point was not necessarily a lobby. My point is that when you have six minds that all have. The voice or voices of the people that they represent in them. And we all have our own approach to how we want to see the utility operate. So there has to be a point that the six of us are able to compromise to come up with a. Budget or a policy or a procedure or a process that is all encompassing to the point that everyone is served. But maybe not at the level that each of us would like. That that is, is just the idea that there has to be a point of compromise and. In stating that, you know, I'm not gonna approve a budget or I'm not going to because of this in advance. Kind of, kind of takes takes you out of that conversation for the rest of us to make the compromise. That's just what I'm just.
I'm open to that. No, absolutely open to it, but I I should put on the table. The things that are important from this one member of six.
Exactly.
Standpoint inside of a budget, what we incorporate. It needs to be put out there.
Every one of us.
There may not be unanimity or even anyone else. If I'm the only one of six that says that that's necessary to have a human interaction regarding customer service. Um, for that, then I don't mind being the only one, but it needs to be put on the table. It needs to be pushed as often as possible. And I'm gonna continue to do that. It won't be the only thing that makes vital determination, but it's the big.
The vote is sufficient. Four votes to done deal and don't bring it back tomorrow.
Yeah. I would prefer to have six votes that we we all like minded.
A lot of helps.
Try to keep the lights on. We gotta figure out a way to.
Alright, so.
I'm not really hearing that there is a consensus to change the process that we've got in place, Bill.
Why don't I do that?
Did your best.
You know, why don't I do this? As we set up our work sessions. Commitment, we've still got time to get the board information prior to the work sessions that you guys have information. In advance to be able to better see what we're talking about and what we're proposing when we walk into the work session. Okay, kind of like tonight, you got, you got the plan a week in advance, you had time to study it. Uh, now I would say this, be productive on both sides. Once we get to the work session. If you have questions, send those to me prior to that, so we can at least address it. So the work session don't become wasted time for everybody, you know, because. You know, we're wasting time for the board because we're we're scrambling trying to come up with answers that we could have prepared prior to the to the meeting. So I'll work with Laurie, we'll modify part of this and then we'll put in some, some anticipated, well, we'll look at the dates that.
We can just get our presentation to him. We can get our presentation.
Get the presentation.
I was thinking that we got our presentation to maybe on the the Friday when the agenda went out.
Let's try to get it to him a week in advance. But I mean, that, that's, that's everybody in the room. Go back to the participants.
And keep in mind.
And the staff people that are listening, well, they're not there now, but the staff, staff people that are. That are listening online that would, you know, Rose, we got an executive meeting next week. I'll make sure that's part of the topic, okay? Keep in mind, gentlemen, do what's still open, right? You can walk in, don't have to wait in the work test, right? And base hell.
I meet with him every week, Bob. I meet with.
We meet every week. So here are the other thing, you know, and I can just wrap this up in two minutes. You know, uh, we do provide board with, board members with uh updates throughout the year, okay? We did just go through a cost of service. Study that shows all of our capital plans for the next, we're doing this cost of service period. If you look at the budget book. There's a five year schedule that's in there. Some of that is gonna fall apart in the outer years because things simply change. Look at the operating budget, there's not a lot of change there, okay? It's. Staffing makes up the majority of that and and then some of the other professional services stuff makes up quite a bit of that. So. Not like we, you know, there's not things that change from year to year by the bit. There's more changes year to year on the capital side than on the operating side.
You know, I would, I would suggest that maybe we have a work session, a pre-staffing work session, work session. Like the the meeting before.
Right.
The one that's scheduled for the work session. Maybe we have a meeting. Have a part of our work session, the one before that to have discussion because that that is always a hot topic.
Okay.
About staffing, everybody always argues.
It's always, it's always a hot one. So so the the two weeks before that one, the presentation, maybe we have a work session where the board. You know, we can, we can discuss some things so that when you guys come to us with that two weeks later, you already know what the temperature is for everybody.
Well, why don't we get you some information on staffing? So at least you've got something to.
That way, yeah, that way we can kind of start.
Okay, because we have done, I have done a lot of research, Rose, to your point on right side of the utility. We're going through that. We're on the path, we're trying to get there. There's still things we still need to work on. Probably the quickest change we made was on the production side shutting down when narrow. We had all this staff that just got transferred to Nierman, and they were really overstuffed there. So now we we work through right side in that. We've got numbers from other utilities on how their staff, utilities similar to us. So we'll go through it when we've met. On that, on a few occasions. So we'll pull all that together as well.
But I think what we're like to see, like the lobby, you know, if 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 this, it's this staffing level, one person, two persons. You know, what hours would be and what the cost would be. And at this, at this level of staffing, what, you know, what the cost would be.
And, you know, and then we, with all the, look at all the technologies.
We can, we can start at the meeting.
Second.
The move in second and roll call, please.
Roll call, Haley.
Hi.
Island.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Broneman.
Hi.
Melo Shiherys.